Selectment's meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Evening, we're going to start and go right into an appointment with the Highway Superintendent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A couple of quick things. Highway sheriff. We just got approved for a new lawnmower last year. So this old 1996 Woods mower is in the way. So it's time to dispose of it. Not dispose of it. What I'd like to do is put it on that muni bid.
Muni-si bid?
Muni-si bid?
Mm-hmm.
Again, I have the pictures and stuff like that. That's the tractor.
If you email the pictures and the specs.
I can bring it. I can send that all to you.
Yeah, and I'll put it on.
It's a Woods mower, Kubota diesel motor, seventy-two and a fifty-two inch mower deck, a three-foot single-stage snowblower with its enclosed cap. Right now it needs a starter, and I'm not putting any more money into it.
Do you have any sense of roughly where it's worth?
Even just the attachments have got to be worth five hundred bucks. So if you want to start at five hundred.
Yeah, give me a number that you think, if it didn't sell, you could still get rid of it, either for scrap or for the attachments or whatever.
Yeah, I would think we should be able to get five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Put it out there for a couple of weeks and see how we make out.
Okay.
Do you have to vote on that or anything?
I think we need to declare it surplus.
Yep. I would accept a motion to declare the mower and mower deck surplus.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion further?
So it's, before the starter went, was it running?
It ran last year until we got the other one. But this is what happened. It's on its second motor.
Yeah.
It's a 1996, and again, you've got to stop putting good money at the back.
Yeah.
So it just goes away. So we don't spend any more money.
It just seems to me like five hundred is what it is.
Get what you can get for it.
That's our money, yeah.
But again, it's the second motor already.
Sure.
And how old is that? And how long does that kind of go? So you've just got to be careful.
Yeah, you put a lot of hours in.
Right.
And it's getting on to twenty years old.
Yeah, right.
All right.
One more thing. Well, I'm here.
Are we going to vote on this one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Officer?
You're on.
Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Last year, we got involved with co-op as far as the heating oil.
Mm-hmm.
This year, they're offering diesel, gasoline, propane, burner maintenance, generator maintenance, and elevator maintenance. I talked to Janet this morning, and I would like to go ahead and go more than heating oil with the burner maintenance and the generator maintenance. Unfortunately, we have a contract right here from Bay State Elevator. It's a five-year contract. I can't get out of it for that five years.
Okay. And when does that run?
Seventeen.
Okay.
So the elevator will have to stay the same this year, but I'd like to try the boiler and burner maintenance and the generator maintenance to get a price.
And this would apply to all the buildings except for the school?
The school, correct. No, I just want to give you an update on what happened last, the last couple of years. I've only been here for one full one, but normally, we use between twenty and twenty-three thousand gallons, all right? So when this thing started last year, we used twenty-three thousand gallons in two thousand twelve, thirteen. The going price for Northborough Oil was three dollars and forty cents. We bought the oil last year for three dollars and ten cents a gallon, okay? So using twenty-three thousand gallons at thirty cents a gallon, we saved sixty-nine hundred dollars. So that's really good. Except for when Northborough Oil is here, they call them up, and all of a sudden, things are fixed. This year, it cost me fifty-three hundred and thirty-seven dollars in repairs and service calls. So the actual net was fifteen hundred dollars that we save. We still save, don't get me wrong.
Mm-hmm.
And again, that's why we have to do it. We have to save money, and this Central Mass Regional Co-op is the way to do it.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just making a point.
Yeah, no, we had some concerns about that when we did the numbers.
And again, this year, they're doing it with the burner service, which last year, they didn't offer. So I'm hoping that it's going to be something.
Any details about that, or who provides that, how it's provided?
No, and we talked about it a little bit this morning. She's trying to get it closer. You know, in other words, different regions are going to have different people. It all depends on who puts in and asks, you know, wants to put the bids in, of course. And again, I just want the okay to go ahead and try it. My problem that I had with her was I asked her, I said, so I have to tell her tomorrow morning to say, you know, because this is happening by, our contract runs out on June thirtieth for the oil. So we need to, of course, get right on this. So I asked, I said, you don't know anything about these? I have, I know what I paid last year for services on all of these other things, on the boiler and the generator and the, but you have a clue? And she doesn't have a clue because it's new. So I said to her, I said, so if I get involved in this, can I back out if I don't like the price? Negative. So again.
Is it one-year commitment?
It's only one year. So then, you know, it's, again, we saved fifteen hundred last year. I was up any money. I was trying to fix boilers, but that's okay.
Well, I was going to ask you that. Did you get fifteen hundred dollars worth of aggravation on top of that?
It's my God, man.
Well, I understand that.
Do you think that the stuff that got fixed is like?
It could have happened whether it was Northborough Oil or this particular company.
Oh, correct.
You get what I'm saying?
Oh, I got the impression Northborough Oil and being here like that, you had to worry.
They would have. And a lot of times, they don't charge us for every kind that a guy comes out because they're getting forty cents a month, a gallon more. So they're still making their money. You get what I'm saying?
Right.
And they live in town, and they're right here, and they got things done quickly. They know all the boilers. But that being said, that's not the point. We're going to save money by doing the co-op. So that's just null and void.
And you don't think that their knowledge of the facilities and the boilers is sufficient to justify that?
Well, Northborough Oil wouldn't do just the, wouldn't do just the maintenance.
I asked them, I asked, after we signed with the, with Peterson Oil, okay, this co-op, I asked Northborough if I could sign a contract to come clean the boilers and do the maintenance for the year. And at first, they said yes, and then they realized that no, they have to, no, they didn't, they didn't think that was right. What I'm going to do is, I already put a call in to, why can't they get into the bidding process? They can certainly put their aim in. And then, you know, if they come in low enough, we can certainly, you know, that's who we'd end up with. But right now, I think we're just going to go with whoever comes in lowest, and we'll survive again because it's saving money.
Okay.
Any questions?
Um, you mean by that there are any delays or anything that jeopardize the buildings as a result of that?
Fortunately, these old buildings, you are correct. In the beginning, it took a long time to get people from Worcester to here. But once I got to know the people, they started sending the same people. It's a big, Peterson's huge. They started saying, there's an old steam boiler uptown, so you need a steam guy.
Uptown being?
The eighteen-seventy.
Yeah, okay.
So when they finally got the same guy, they sent the same guy. So it started getting better at the end, so, you know, just a lot of fun.
But now, you're going to have maybe somebody else.
Exactly.
Well, that's when you do a group bid, that's what happens.
Yeah, no.
And I'm not against it, believe me. It all works, it just.
I mean, that was always the problem, was when we went out to bid, we never got any bids besides Northborough.
Right.
So it was kind of like, take it or leave it.
Right. So I just need the okay to ask about these other ones, the generator and the, and the oil and burner service.
You're asking for us to authorize you to participate or to ask about it?
No, participate because I have to let it know tomorrow.
Okay. All right, I would accept a motion to participate in the Central Mass Regional Co-op with respect to oil?
Oil, oil burner.
Oil burner repair, right?
Generator.
Yeah.
Generator repair, maintenance.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'll be back at seven forty-five.
All righty. And Mary Ann McLeod is not here?
I actually don't have contact information from her, so I didn't, I wasn't able to confirm with her.
Okay.
But I thought you said that you asked her to come up with like a list of committee members and admission statement.
Yeah, working on those first four points, but if she's not here, we can do it another time.
So you never talked to her or told her that she was on?
No, I, she kind of was told last week to come back, but then I never had a way to reach her.
Okay.
Okay.
Next one's seven-thirty.
Yeah. All right, then we'll start on other items. We have a motion for approval of the April seventh minutes. All selectmen were present and take a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We have a motor vehicle.
Actually, there were two sets of minutes that there was open session and executive session also for April seventh.
Yes, when I said the minutes for April seventh, I meant both, but if.
Okay.
We have a motor vehicle fiscal year fourteen refund in the amount of fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Take a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item that we have is reserve fund transfer for town council expense.
I don't have a figure yet. I have to ask, this came up with Copman and Page's April bill, which will make us go negative thirteen hundred in the account. So there's not enough to cover that. That was like a five thousand dollar bill, by far the largest of any month for any provider. I guess it's the pilot, and I'm not sure, you know, if it's also maple wood or what it is, but it was a heavy month.
Do you have the bill here?
Yep, it's.
This is the five thousand dollar bill?
Yep. And so in order to do a reserve fund transfer, I'm going to ask Copman and Page and Brackett and Lucas to estimate May, which should be fairly easy to do. And I don't know how they would be able to estimate this, but estimate June, too, where we have some more matters in the pipeline for June. Maybe round up.
Yeah, I think we definitely, and, yeah, round up because it, you know, we know there's going to be some actions on with the lawsuits between now and then. Just take a quick look.
I only got that, well, I think I knew that it was negative, but June was telling me how to try to track down those estimates for them, so I'll get on that. The finance committee meets June eleventh and twenty-fifth. So a final reserve fund transfer approval wouldn't happen until the eleventh. Anyhow, it could happen for next, hopefully, over the next one day.
No, no one will be here next week. So we can vote.
A number?
A number. Because no one will be here next week, and they meet next week.
They do meet the eleventh. Yep. You can see the pattern of where we've been, and Tom, maybe you're a good estimator on this, but.
And you should.
So we have May and June coming, right?
Right.
Yeah. I have to say, I'd be inclined to say something like six to seven thousand dollars, given the fact that we've got the maple wood issue.
In court?
Yeah. How'd you come up with that figure, Tom? Well, I was looking at previous months in which we'd had movement on that, and they run twenty-six hundred, and again, I'm looking at ones where there was sort of major movement on that particular one. And they range from a low of twenty-five hundred to a high of thirty-seven hundred. So I'm figuring, you know, three is the middle.
Well, I mean, it's not the end of the world if we miss it. You can just ask for another one.
Well, plus, you need thirteen hundred just to cover that last bill.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And then you have two.
Yeah, so let's ask, I would say, let's ask for six, because I wasn't figuring that in.
Six or seven.
I think seven, if we're thinking about the fact that we're already thirteen hundred in the hole.
Yeah. Yeah, makes sense.
So do you want a motion?
Yes, I would accept a motion to ask for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of seven thousand dollars to the town council line item.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, I accept the vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. So you can write it up, and we can come in and sign it this week?
The form's there, you can sign it.
Okay.
If you want to put something in, you can sign it, and it'll actually be, I put the description in.
Yeah, it looks like half that five thousand, close to half of that was.
Pilot.
Was the pilot. And then, you know, we had town, town meeting stuff. Yeah, a lot, lot, lot of stuff for the, we did ask for the complex opinion, which wasn't hugely expensive, like seven or eight hundred dollars, but it did contribute to, did contribute to total. And, yeah, we have between five hundred and a thousand on the Johnson case.
Okay.
All right.
So is the form in there?
Well, we'll see. And I think we should give the reason here as.
Excessive spending?
Yeah, excessive spending. I think it, I'll say.
You can type it in tomorrow, you can write it in.
Litigation expense. I have it. Freedom of litor array, okay? And I'll say litigation expense likely to continue this through in fiscal year. All right?
Yep.
That makes sense?
Yep.
Okay, and I think it's the clerk who signs that, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's all.
Yeah.
You just wrote mark the bottom.
All right. June says she'd like to use up the rest of her vacation hours over the next couple of She wants to take off Friday, June sixth, Thursday, June twelfth, Friday, June thirteenth, Friday, June twentieth. And she may need to carry some over as well. Problems with any of that?
Nope.
Okay, I'll take that as a vote to approve. And I think we'll break and do the seven-thirty. We are being televised. I think you came in after I made that announcement, but.
Okay, so we're on national television.
So you're on national television.
I'm watching my P and Qs.
Absolutely.
All right. We're here because we've had a meeting with Dan Barton and Thomas in April, I would say before. When I did, because it was so long ago and so many things have happened since then, I summarized it.
Okay.
So let me give this to you and tell you what we have to do tonight. Do you have one for me? We were discussing trying to get the, this eighteen-seventy town elevator project going. And if you remember, the last glitch was that we hadn't realized that we had to go up and bid for the RFP for a designer. So we had talked with Thomas about doing it ourselves, and we had some, some possible guides that was really much more practical for us to do. And Dan Barton has all that information. He's done it all.
It's Dan Barton, I haven't been.
Dan Barton is the architect.
Oh, okay, fine.
Who's a designer, he's a designer.
Okay, okay. I guess so. He's worked on the Old Methodist Church.
Yes, he's doing that pro bono.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, yes, I know. And he's done all the preliminary work. We have done the geotechnical work with Ross Associates. We dug our holes, we know what's there, but we need to go out to bid. And so we discussed it with him, and he said, you know, I could do it, and it would be very quick, clean, correct, and we could get going on it. Now, the, the point there, as we discussed with Thomas, is that he then would not be able to be the architect or one architect to choose. But he said that's fine with him because he could then just be an advisory person. He's going to be in town anyway, doing the other. And we thought it would be good to have someone who knows us, who's comfortable. He's helped us build bridges with the Historical Society, so that we're working together now. The Historical Society, in fact, gave us three thousand dollars of their monies to help defray expenses of adding on the curatorial building. So what we would like for you to vote on tonight is to allow us to go forward and have him develop the RFP, which he said, for the design service, which he says he could do quite quickly. And then we can post it on the central register in July. From what I can figure out, I'm not sure on this totally because I didn't call and I just looked on the site, but it would take from two to three weeks if we get it posted at the right time so that it goes out and we can then have architects send us possibly visit and do that kind of thing over the summer. The, Thomas has agreed that we, the advisory committee with Dan and Thomas can be the board that will choose the architect who will then do the work. We select an architect.
Well, we would, I think we would present that to the selectmen.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what I said.
Yes. Because they're only an advisory.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, that would definitely. If we then select an architect, we could then complete the construction drawings in December, by December, and then possibly have, we're hoping to then have the estimates of the cost of the project ready for town meeting in May because we could then go up to bid for construction.
And you, you have sufficient funds to pay for this in the existing articles?
We do. We were hoping that you had said something that maybe you could help us out, because we were hoping to use that in the.
I said that if we, we might be able to get it on a special town meeting.
Okay.
But in the event that next town meeting had, had closed at an unusual time, I thought that it was going to close during the next selectmen's meeting, and in fact, it had closed at, at one o'clock that afternoon, so I was not. But let's talk about the amounts, because you have the amounts to spend to do this.
We have, we think, I have Article twenty-two drawings for that elevator, two oh nine, about four thousand in that account. And we have the Article five and this accessibility, which I think we can also draw from. We have almost five thousand.
Okay.
So we were hoping, of course, to use that further on in the project as we do it, but.
No, and what we had said when we met was, this is a step that was not anticipated when we began this because we didn't think it had to go. It, it's certainly a step that's necessary to do the things that are, you know, indicated in those articles.
Right.
And we recognize that this means spending this money now, which was not anticipated, would mean that we would have to, you know, get that much more in some future article, be it a special town meeting, be it an annual town meeting.
Okay. So the cost altogether, Pat, Barton's putting together the RFP for zip.
No.
No?
No, it's for this three to five.
Okay, so that goes out. And what do you expect the architect to charge for the design, roughly?
Well, remember, what we're looking for is, we're looking for the detailed design. So we've done, you know, we've done designs before that were, you know, big picture designs.
Right.
This would be the detailed design so that we could go out to construction bid.
Right, so how much would that?
When we were in discussion before this RFP thing sort of inserted itself, I think the thought was that was going to be in the fifties.
Yeah, forty to fifty with the curatorial building.
Because you need, there's a bunch of different architectural pieces that need to, you know, there's the architect part, there's the engineering part, and there's the elevator, which is the thrust of it. So it was in that ballpark. And, you know, part of our concern about having Dan help us is that we spent all these years working with Dan and bringing people in to use the place and say, you know, would this be possible? No, 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 you know, that's no good. We, you know, we don't want to mess the look of the building up. So we went through all this sort of work, and we don't want to draw something up where we get five architects returning stuff.
No.
That are all ones that we couldn't live with.
Yeah, we don't want to do it.
You know, we already know what people live with.
We know.
So we want, we feel that it's important to get a professional who can steer those architect proposals into the, you know.
And we have conceptual level drawings at a fair level of detail to help steer that.
Right, and with some, in certain parts, very detailed because we're, you only have certain inches to go with ramps and things inside the building.
Okay.
So I think whatever architect comes on board is going to have some of the work done for him or her.
So how much money do you have for the architect?
For the architect? We asked for twenty-five thousand, and we have that from last, you know, from the last town meeting. We, if we use up some of this, it'll depend on how much is left. We have, yeah, construction drawings, three thousand from the Historical Society, then whatever's left from the accessibility and the drawings for the elevator.
And currently, they're, what the amounts of those do?
We have approved for twenty-five K for construction.
Yeah.
Do you think that's enough?
No.
Because you just said forty to fifty.
We said forty.
To forty to fifty.
That's, that was one of the things that was going on prior to town, if we take the clock back into February.
Yeah.
And we were trying to get ready for town meeting and having discussions with the architect. That's when it, and we were trying to elicit some extra money and help from people. That's when this whole RFP thing came up because we were, we were short.
So if, if in fact, they had spent, they had spent this amount of money to go through this RFP step, and they had used the sort of remainder of all the other articles, they would have had thirty-seven thousand, which, you know, I think there was some thought at the time that particularly with Dan continuing it, that, you know, we might be able to be squeezed in under that.
Right.
But the new process has kind of sunk back.
Well, I don't understand how you're going to get an architect if you don't have enough money to pay for one.
We will have to take, as I say, we'll have to do a special town meeting, or we'll, we'll have to do something at the annual town meeting, or somehow split it with the amount of money that we have.
But they need, don't you need these plans by December?
That's what they'd like to have.
Would like to have, so that, would like to have this.
If you don't have the money.
Remember, this is, remember, it's useful to recall the curve ball that came in at the eleventh hour regarding, we asked for twenty-five. And then on town meeting floor, an amendment was put forward to include the curatorial building.
Right, right.
And that, that is what. And that, that is what shifted us up and made pretty much the twenty-five not suitable and then we were scurrying around.
Well, that's a legitimate part of the project.
Right.
Yeah, no. So, that's all part of the project.
But, um, you know, we did, we couldn't say, oh, well, let's see, how much more is that going to be on the town meeting floor? Add that in. So, it's not an excuse, but that's, that's why there's that.
It's the amount, right.
There's, that's why there's the delta.
No, I was just looking at this and I thought that you had it all planned out, that you had the money.
No.
Because somewhere in the idea of town needs to know.
No, they understand that there's, there has to be.
So, we would envision getting the bid back. When we get the, the bids back for this architect, then we'll know.
Of course, their idea of how much, how much the gap is.
We'll know what the, what the realm is and what the, it's going to cost.
If you remember, I mentioned this because I was rather chagrined that, uh, uh, special town meeting warranted close at one o'clock in the afternoon rather than eight in the evening because I've been wanting to put this, this, this on, but that, you know, I mean, it, it closed, so. So, yes, if there's, you know, basically if there's a special town meeting in the fall or we want to have a special town meeting in the fall for this, I mean, we talked in April, we should need to get more money.
And never, yeah, we would just have to ask for it.
Yeah.
Let the town decide what they want to do.
Yeah, we've been very generous so far. We've been trying to be good stewards.
You know, our, our goal really to get to construction documents was, because, you know, this has been going on for a long time. We've been asking for little piecemeal parts. People at the end of the day say, well, how much is it going to cost? And we've, and we've been able, we have no concrete idea until you get to construction documents and people can bid on it.
I think, you know, I wouldn't call that a curve ball, the curatorial building. People should have predicted that because that, you know, when you're designing, you knew something had to happen with that. Now, if you get off with twenty thousand, I think you get off pretty easy. I don't think any plans for that, anybody thinking about that? That's, that has to be undone simultaneous. It seems to me, anyway, I don't know what you think, to do in this elevator.
Well, it's only a curve ball in the sense that if somebody had whispered in there or here before.
Just because it came up on town meeting floor is all it is.
You know, is an, is a, you know, if it.
We have it all of our plans beforehand.
Yeah.
It's always been.
Yeah.
And we've been, we have been going back and forth on whether we should be here or there.
You know, with open meetings and meetings.
We have all those maps that are all there.
It was only.
Either here or here or.
Okay.
We've walked across it several times.
So, it's not an excuse, but it's why we have this delta of the different prices.
Yeah, yeah. And then when it was added, we couldn't increase the amount of the special article on the town meeting floor. So, that was, that was the problem.
I remember Beesie standing up and offering it, rightfully so, but we couldn't do it.
So, anyway, that, that's, that's why the difference.
Okay.
Okay, um, I would, uh, accept, um, a motion to authorize an arrangement with Dan Barton of Magel Architects to prepare the RFP and provide later consultative services for an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
So, move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Apologies, I've, as people know here, I've, um, I've sort of doing two jobs for a couple of months. That was very difficult. So.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back again.
Oh, they will. Thanks a lot.
Oh, you've been in it?
Yes.
Have you?
Yes. So, Memorial Day ceremonial string, you have to go from one end to the other.
All righty.
Before your wrists are knocked.
And then get out in a hurry, huh?
Yeah. Sounds like a Titanic wreck. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm new. Who, whose name is this one? No. Oh, Bob McTague. Thank you. Captain L C, Captain T A G. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, and we have a seven forty-five. Mr. Senning?
Hello.
Hello. Right on time.
Thank you very much. By way of an update, uh, our Mass Grant Road design is putting out on spec. Is it better than ninety percent? It'll probably be done a week from Wednesday, totally. The reason I stopped in tonight, aside from sharing that news with you, is I wanted to have a little bit of a conversation about anticipating Mass Works saying to start filling out the application of the, uh, for the grant. It's a fairly lengthy grant. We've been told by Victoria, who has since left, that you, Matt, you really got to take charge of this. They don't have a lot of extra personnel in small communities. This is going to fall into your lap in all probability. And I've discussed this with Mary and Mary said, well, we got to find out from the board how we'd like to proceed. On a internal basis, we also have to kind of tell people when they can go on vacation, when they can't go on vacation. So, if we think we're going to use our people, specifically perhaps our comptroller Kathy Reed, I have to kind of say, okay, Kathy, the town's kind of indicated you, you might be it, you have to plan accordingly. No, you're not it, the town's going to appoint somebody else to do it, why haven't planned here summer accordingly. So, that was my goal with coming up here tonight was to really just chat with the board about what direction we might want to go, assuming the positive that we're going to be asked to fill out this form. And we think that's going to come pretty quickly. We actually got a false one this morning, uh, but we do anticipate a, a goal.
When, what, what makes this form get filled out? What thing has to happen for it to?
Erica has to say go.
Erica is the new Victoria.
All she has to do is send an email, I believe, to, to you, to Mary.
But why would she do that?
She likes her progress reports. Victoria told us before she left, she thought we were pretty close to somebody saying yay.
In other words, that enough had been done.
Right.
And specifically with respect to the apartment?
Yes.
Yes. And what has been done is moving them along, encouraging them.
This is what, this is encouraging.
Okay.
This came at four thirty this afternoon. This is from Erica. My sincerest apologies for any confusion, but the email, the status change was automatically generated for something other than what we're working on. So, we are reviewing the information that you provided during this month's update. Cannot give you an immediate response at this time. I'll be in touch with, if we feel that it is appropriate to. I will be in touch when we feel that it is appropriate to proceed with the Mass Works contract proceeding. That's where we're at as of four thirty tonight.
So, what, what is involved in this?
This, this is, this is what it, what it does to you, okay? It tells you step by step how to do this contract, all right? In other words, it's going to tell you, go online, everything has to be done online. It tells you every step to do. This is what this whole package is about. And, and I agree that Kathy should do this. I don't know how many hours it's going to take, like Matt asked me this afternoon. One thing that I did read on, on page seven is, when possible, contracts should be executed after the construction bids have been received. In other words, they're, they're really, that's where I think until, I don't think we need any, that's what that says right there. We don't need to start the, we can't start the contract until they're happy with you and I. And then it says, after the construction bids have been received, then you start actually making out every page, twenty-two pages. And half of these pages are actually.
And just take, take a look while you're talking.
They are actually showing how to get paid on a weekly, once the construction starts. Tells you how to send the bills in. The contract is pretty simple. It's going to take a day, something like that.
Do you have to be certified to send the bills in? Like for the schools, you have to have a certified person in order to put the bills into the system?
I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer. But I have, I have showed my concern about, we're not, they're not going to pay anything unless the work has been done. So, the Senneys and I have come up with a plan to have somebody to okay the work that's been done, which then goes to the state and then the state, I think, I think, I'm pretty sure that the town has to sign, I'm pretty sure I have to sign. And then in two weeks, we'll get a paycheck to pay the people who've done the work. That's the way I'm reading it, so. It's quite a procedure as the work is going on, rather than, the contract itself, to me, should be done rather quickly to get the ball rolling. Then it's like daily and that's where we're going to need her, is like the daily, you know, once the dirt starts moving, I think she's going to have to be working, well, that's quite, quite a bit to get the bills out, to get the documentation to the state.
If we decide it's her, we may decide it's not her.
Exactly. If she has the time to do it, if, you know.
Well, right now, she works eighteen hours a week. I can, sometimes in the summertime, I give her a little extra time off, but I don't want to get caught saying to her, yeah, go ahead and plan things with your husband and your kids. And then all of a sudden, you guys say.
We need her.
Right. It's always going to be Kathy.
So, let's, let's, let's review this. When we get the go-ahead, we have to fill out the contract, right? We don't have to supply the contract signed until we have the construction bids in?
Just read that first paragraph. You see how, I see how you interpret it.
Yes, it's suggesting that, yes, it is suggesting that.
Because the price, the prices are not going to be the right unless we have
Right.
a bid, you can't tell.
Okay, and when are the bids coming?
The RFP is almost ready and then.
It'll be ready, probably ready by the week. By next Wednesday.
By next Wednesday.
So, you're going to put it on then, put it on Compass? I mean, how do you?
Yeah, I'm just trying, I'm seeing if we can, you know, nail a jaw onto the wall here a little bit and figure out what timeframe this is likely to happen.
You have three people that you want sent, total bid documents.
Well, don't forget, it's going to central, central, um.
Central register.
Register. And then it goes in the paper for two weeks. So, it's not going to be my three people. It's going to be, you're going to get.
We could get twenty.
You could get twenty applicants, correct? That's how it has to be. So, I mean, I, in the beginning, I said, gee, sure, I know some people, CMS and Bob on this one, you know, some people that we know, but.
Okay, so we've got one week to RFP, two weeks of publication.
And this, and this, none of this can, can happen until Erica and the state are happy with what the Senneys have proposed.
Can we send out the, the, the bids? The, the ads in the paper?
Well, if, if, if they're not happy, I don't know that answer because I don't know if they're, if they're, as long as they say we can. I, I think it's a waste of time and effort if they're not happy with, with, with where the Senneys are.
So, what you want from us today is just the permission to use your person to do?
I'm just trying to get her organized for the next summer, for the summer, I think is. We were just kicking this back and forth and all of a sudden I saw a void. Nobody here, nobody.
Yeah, and again, I'm trying, I'm just trying to figure out realistically when, when the windows, this would happen.
I, I think July first.
You think July first?
So, you don't have a new budget?
I think the ad will be in the paper July, so one way or the other, the ads are going to be in the paper July first. That Erica will have said go. That she'll be satisfied with whatever we've given her as far as bank assurances that we have the money to build the units.
And once the ads are in the paper, we anticipate having.
The bids will come to us.
It takes two weeks.
Takes two weeks.
Two weeks, you have to be advertised.
That's July fifteenth.
Right.
The bids. And how long would we be reviewing these?
As quickly as one meeting because most, most of it's going to be, I'll talk, I'll plan it, I'll look at it and then.
You might want to check the background.
Oh, yeah, but they give you, the only people that can bid on.
So, we're probably, probably talking about last week of July or so to actually have a bid.
And we were talking, digging the first, versus the second week of August. We're thinking first or second week of August, so dig it.
It's a pretty straightforward job, isn't it?
Yeah.
And it's all gravel, easy going and just not a layup.
Get done before school buses.
Okay. And I, I was, I was looking, I was looking at, what, what exactly are we asking in that stage your comptroller to do?
I mean, I, we have to, somebody has to go online and fill this out. Now, Keith, maybe one day's work, maybe six days' work.
Right.
When you start making, when it stops not working, it's a problem.
For one thing, we can't get online to look at what the contract form is until they give us the, okay. All right, so I don't.
Yeah, I got to say, until we see that and can see what the, I mean, I.
What it takes, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, some administrative help, but obviously this is something that the town is doing. We can't.
If, if we pass on Kathy for the summer, I just, I just kind of want to make sure I'm not letting her off for a five-week period because.
Who we would have do it.
That's what, that's always.
That's the problem, right.
Yeah, in other words, I just don't want to let Kathy go and have my brother up here for twelve hours.
You know, to fill these forms.
Uh, filling these forms up or, or mine, driving Mary crazy.
Or, right, or even if you're going to take Mary's work
Yeah, we.
and put her in the spot.
Well, I mean, we could have, we could have an associate for town council do it, I suppose, if we needed to. But what, what is the first thing that's going to happen to trigger the second thing and trigger the third thing? What, what do we?
Erica, Victoria, she's going to send a nod, saying go, put the application. Now, my brother believes that will come earlier than later just by conversations that he has.
Anything can be done to encourage earlier?
All of the.
Outside of being a nuisance and.
No. No, Chris does, Chris never wants to be a nuisance. No, he'll, he'll, he'll go right by the rules.
No, I, I mean, yeah, for some time.
What they're doing right now is a monthly report.
Yeah, they seem, yeah, they, they like the monthly report very much. They're, they say they're going to use it as a mild, like the light kind soil thing we have here.
Great.
For all their things. We just keep coming up with forms, but we want to, we want to, we want to do better than that.
Yeah.
I think they, Chris thinks in the next three weeks, somebody's going to say, yes, go. Fill it out, put your bids out publicly. We'll, 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 we feel confident, we'll pay the bills. Uh, we'll get your people reimbursed.
Talking to Erica this afternoon, she, I, I feel the same, just through her voice, I feel that she's ready to.
Great.
Well, it is great and I just didn't want to, I just didn't want to have nobody to do the job.
And she has to be satisfied that the rest of the project is sufficiently far along and committed to support this, correct?
Exactly.
I think she only cares about eighty-four apartments.
Yeah. Yeah, we've talked about that before.
It's just, that's what she wants. She wants to know the apartments are coming, all, all signed, signed up, and I think she's pretty confident. And she's new.
And where are you on that?
We're very close. You know, we've got a partner, we've got financing, we're in pretty good shape there.
Okay. I mean, my own feeling is when we can look at this contract, that we may end up having to.
Just farm it out.
I mean, if we, if we have to farm it out to council, we have to farm it out to council. We're getting how much in this?
A million five.
Yeah, we're getting a million five in this.
Yeah.
It doesn't look like anything.
No, it's not.
I mean, and I wouldn't say the council needs to do this, it's just.
Yeah, no, I, no, no, it's inputting, but the contract itself, you don't even see. I mean, it's inputting the contract once you review the contract.
Once we can get in online and see what the contract says, which I don't think is going to be really easy.
And again, my feeling is if, if it is something like this and they have a paralegal duty because, you know, so be it.
So be it.
I mean, I.
We just didn't want to, we just didn't want to, we, we just didn't want to not have somebody available after kind of implying we would have somebody available, so I, so I wanted to chat about it upfront.
I actually, I have concerns with having, um, and I appreciate the offer of the help, but I have concerns.
You don't have user at all.
I have some concerns with, um, you know, having a, you know, a private entity that has an interest in this.
The only thing we'll say is that we are planning on hiring a project manager.
And that's fine.
Okay, and that project manager will then just submit to somebody to do the paperwork with a signature of mine or yours or somebody, and that she would just be doing the paperwork. In other words, the project manager would be okay in everything that goes through that. That's my opinion.
But you would be overseeing the product, the project manager.
Once a day, I have to show up.
Yeah.
But it's, it's ours, it's our grant.
That's right.
So, yeah, I will have to be there.
Yeah.
So, I don't know that, for eligible costs, I don't know that you might get reimbursed for having someone to put this in.
I, I understand.
I'm just saying.
Yeah. Yeah.
Reimbursement guidelines.
Well, and we're not gonna figure that out sitting here.
No.
No.
So I think, yes, we will figure out a way.
We've chatted about it.
Yeah.
If nothing else, we've chatted about it, it won't be a surprise.
Yeah.
On July tenth meeting, if we, you know, if we're looking at each other trying to figure out who's gonna do it.
No, it's just an update.
It's an update, and we're real pleased with the drawings, they look tremendous, it's gonna, it's gonna be a great entryway. Both for the reach in the town, we're very confident in that.
Again, if we, if we need to look at it, we can look, maybe look at some of the, like, Tanger's Group that does administration of things. You know, I think that's probably preferable to having a.
Who put the grant in, wasn't it your, who wrote the grant stuff?
Worcester Business Development did it the first three years, my nephew did it with my brother's assistant and Mary, or Peggy's assistants in the last two hours, as all grants go through in the last two hours. But we did it in-house this fourth time. Some people are very proud of that down there.
No, it's good. It's good.
I used all my paper for this.
All right.
We're breaking out to speed on everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very nice.
Just one, one more thing, while I'm here, just to give you a schedule and update on two of the things we're doing around now. The transfer station is on schedule for July fifteenth to be caved.
Okay.
River Road resurface will be completed this week, with a top coat on it, as long as it doesn't rain. Just wanted to give you a little quick update on that.
Excellent, thank you.
See you all.
See ya.
Who's this young man visiting us tonight?
Hi, I'm doing a parent badge, I just have to sit on, in on a meeting.
Oh, great.
Are you bored or, or, or?
I'm interested.
Just kidding.
You can come up close if you want, you know, you got any questions or something.
You can go back for a bit, you're lying.
He'd rather go sit up in the car.
Okay. All right, and then.
Geez, Erbel. Yeah, pet eight. She might be running a little late. She, I confirmed with her, she is going to be here.
Okay. Can I just pop to the men's room real quick? Not that first one, just to the men's room.
Sure, Thomas, reshadow him.
Did that farm the owners that you were reviewing just then, to fill out?
No, because there's not that much stuff you can put into it. If you, well, they'll have the construction.
Yeah.
Documents, I don't know. I, I think you gotta wait until they get the code, and then once they get the code, you can go in and look at it and then decide.
Yeah.
I mean, I've filled out grant stuff before, but.
But you didn't clean up these grants, is it easy for you?
I don't think these would be as bad as the other ones where you have to reword the same thing.
The apartments that we was talking about, that's important to buffer us from forty B, isn't it?
Yes. So once he gets the foundation in.
Yeah.
But I'm not clear, I'll have to ask Eloise, if that gets us up to ten percent now that the North Brook Two is off the books?
Yeah.
Cause that was another forty units, I think.
Cause there's a couple of other people floating around, hovering around, looking for opportunities.
I'll have to ask Eloise.
All right. Then we'll pick up where we left off, which was, I think, the.
Five.
Yep, which was the email regarding fee schedules with inspectors.
That's from Jim.
Yep, I, yep.
So that would just be the electrical and plumbing.
Right.
And, well, she also throws out the, the idea of the fire inspector also, who's ninety-five percent offset receipts. Though you don't have direct, I guess, oversight on that, but.
Now, is she worried that they're going to go over the offset receipts?
I, she, no, she didn't write a lot to it, but what she was saying is, if you've done it on Solomon Pond historically and brought people down to seventy-five percent, and you did it on the Indian Head Solo project and you brought it down to fifty percent of the electrical fee, and we're already this far into Highland Commons and there's been no adjustment, no touching anyone's ninety-five percent. But you have Cabela's in the pipeline, and you can see the Cabela's, among the things I put in there is miscellaneous correspondence, is just the footing and the foundation for Cabela's, that was a one hundred and thirty thousand dollar building inspector permit fee. But there's big plumbing, electrical coming down the pipeline for Cabela's and the rest of Highland Commons. Do you want to take any action about it? Do you wanna do it mid, mid-project like this, or?
Well, I mean, it, it fries, we haven't had a huge amount in Berlin at this point.
Well, did you see Larry's report? I mean, that was, did I read, like, fourteen million?
That was the Cabela's, and that was just like, well, I guess it was more than the foundation. It was the whole, the whole thing.
Yeah, but of course, the building inspector is, he's on a salary, and some of that.
Yeah, the electrical.
Yeah. I guess I would be inclined to go to a seventy-five percent on this, and maybe propose it and offer the inspectors a chance to come in at the next meeting to discuss that, I don't know. I wouldn't go any higher. Wow, look, look at that form that Judy put together there, I made it look. Yeah, again, we're, we're sort of doing it on the fly because.
Well, I think this is, this was, I put this together for the electrical inspector, but what we're talking about is special projects.
Okay, yeah, but again, this is helpful because it shows what people get generally. I mean, what we have done for Solomon Pond Mall was seventy-five, and I think people felt that that was fair at the time.
For electrical?
For electrical and plumbing and gas. And I don't remember, honestly remember whether it applied to fire, but I know it applied to the other two. I guess I'd also point out that in that particular project, there was a clerk of the works and there was somebody who did things to a very high degree of sort of finish in terms of review and passed it over. And that's not necessarily the case at Highland Commons, so that, you know, just, just to.
What about this secretary that they're looking for, that person?
No, no, we were talking about people, we were talking about basically a technical clerk of the works who oversaw.
Okay.
Reviewed things before the inspectors came in, had them sort of set up and, and, you know, so on, you know, a fair amount of preliminary work.
There was a secretary though for the Solomon Pond Mall, right? That was Al's daughter.
Mm-hmm, there was.
So they had that too.
But, yeah. I guess, you know, I, I still think it's gonna be a lot, it's probably going to be a lot. I don't know how much the electrical, plumbing and gas and fire inspections are likely to be, is anybody else at this table? Nope, okay. I guess, yeah, I will, I, I think we should consider a, a lower percentage. But I think we should discuss it with the building inspectors, and I'd like to have some sense of what the order of magnitude is. Cause to deal with it on only the one fact that fifteen years ago, we reduced it under somewhat different circumstances, it's not quite enough for me to be comfortable with talking about it tonight.
No, I, I think we need to bring them in. Otherwise, you're just making stuff up.
And I think it would be helpful to, to get some order of magnitude, understanding what those inspection fees are gonna be before we make a decision.
Do you want that for the six, well, your sixteenth we need to talk about.
Yeah, we do need to talk about that. But I see Jeanie is in, so we could take you.
Sure, thank you.
And pick this up.
Please pardon my appearance, I just wanted to give this to you so you know what I'm talking about. As you probably know by now, we have another forty B barrel in Berlin.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to get ahead of the game. Am I giving it all to you?
We have it televised, I want to remind you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
So anyway.
We showed that at the beginning, I tried to remind you. I, but I like to remind people who weren't here at the beginning when we announced it, just.
So we have another forty B coming down the pike, it's Green Acres over on Dudley Road. The ZBA has not heard them yet, but they are on the agenda for July ninth. We do have a meeting on June eleventh, so I'm trying to be able to proactive and seek the selectmen's approval to submit an application to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership for some technical oversight for this next project that's coming in. I have communication with Laura Schufelt, Community Assistant Manager of MHP. And she says to me, you know, Berlin did have a consultant two thousand and three, but we can discount that, since I'm sure it's different board, which it is. Therefore, Berlin is eligible for fifteen thousand.
Go, go for it.
You willing, you want it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Might as well take it. I gotta been writing.
All right.
And so, all I need is, I looked at the application and there's some information that we don't have at this minute. I wasn't sure who was gonna be the contact person on the board of selection, I'm assuming the chair, but I just want to confirm that before I submitted that information. And then, I talked to a number of units, sites, states, blah, blah, blah. And then it asked, and I don't know if we have this, do we have a master plan or a housing plan that addresses affordable housing? Do any, anyone know that, or where could I find that out?
Yes, I believe we do, and I think the planning board could help with that.
All right, so I'll contact them. And when I came to the board before in requesting a change in the application for the ZBA, in the back of my mind I thought, it really doesn't cover forty Bs, but certainly we wouldn't have another one coming down the line, it was my mistake. Thank you so much, Mary.
I'm gonna make a copy of it, but that's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Here you go.
I never truly did what they asked here, does your municipality adopt or has adopted a comprehensive permit review rules? We have it, so heads up, I'll be coming back before the board at some point with the ZBA after we review this. Get through this, cause we only have a hundred and eighty days from the time the first hearing, I think it is, to get a decision submitted. Which now brings me to the, I'm gonna need town council to write the decision and/or at least oversee a draft of the decision and fine tune it.
Is this gonna, this is gonna be something that will be happening in the next fiscal year?
Yes, yes, it'll be starting now but happening then. My confusion is, who is our town council now?
Copelman and Page.
It's Copelman and Page, and it is Joel Bard?
Joel Bard is the main contact, yes.
Okay, but there isn't anyone specifically for zoning matters per se? I know that there are zoning.
Not, I mean, no, not, because Kay was the one who had some expertise in that, there was a sign to our town, she left, they will assign somebody else.
All right, all right. So if I need to contact town council to let them be aware of this, I would go through the board of selection, I assume.
I'll send you the contact information, but you need a vote of the board to do that.
Yeah, to allow us to do that. And that's, that's really it, I really want the technical review in July.
So you're, you're looking for an authorization to apply for the technical review assistance?
Yep.
Okay, I would take a motion to that effect.
So move.
Check out.
Excellent, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Wait, she needs to take a vote?
No, any further discussion on that motion?
No, I, yes, go ahead.
I will, I will need a signature. I, I don't wanna be presumptuous and ask the board to sign a blank application, unless they're willing to.
When do you anticipate having this done?
After our Wednesday, June eleventh meeting.
Wednesday, June eleventh meeting, okay.
And I didn't wanna wait until your next meeting, or unless, you know, June sixteenth I hear is a train wreck. Unless you want me to be able to slip it under your nose for a signature and then come back on the seventeenth and grab it.
Well, we, I mean, if we authorize this, we can authorize me to sign it.
All right.
I will be out of town from the seventh to the fourteenth, but I am back in on Saturday the fourteenth, which is only a couple of days after your meeting.
All right, wonderful.
And we can arrange for you to.
We'll have it on the ZBA agenda for June eleventh, we will discuss it, complete the application, bring it back to Mary for signature.
And then, you know, I'll be back in town on the fourteenth, I can sign the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, whatever.
Beautiful. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll include the motion authorization for me to sign the application on behalf of this lady.
Yeah, so move.
Okay.
Thank you. And then to con, and then to use town council.
I was gonna do that as a second motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is to apply for the, the technical assistance. If there's no further discussion, I'll take a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then a further vote to authorize the ZBA to contact and utilize Copelman and Page in connection with the Green Acres forty B applications.
So move.
Check out.
Any further discussion on that motion? All right, here and now, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And there you go.
Board of selection, thank you for your swift action.
All righty, thanks.
Jean, when is the, when is, uh, Tyler Farming again, Bartalini?
Bartalini?
Yeah, the one on, wants the variance on the house, on the lot size down.
Oh, oh, yeah, um, he is coming back in, yeah, this, this next meeting.
Which is?
As long as he had a meeting with the historical commission, I think it was.
Yeah, he had, had talked to them, but what, so your next meeting is when, Thursday?
June eleventh, Wednesday, June eleventh.
Oh, June eleventh. Okay, I won't, okay. Yep, you're wondering.
Okay. Mary to come back.
You might flip one.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is annual appointments.
Yes.
Is there anything in here on that?
No, there's not, I need to, I'm computerizing them, I'm going to be.
Oh, okay, no, that's fine, I just, I.
Paper instead of buying hospital board forms. But I should've just put the slate in front of you so you could've just moved the slate, I could've done green cards to follow, but I will have them. If you want, well, I'll have the slate on the name.
Yeah, yeah, no, so I'll have to do it on the sixteenth?
Yep.
Okay, no, I just wanted to be sure that I hadn't gotten things out of order or whatever.
No, you were right.
Did we ever decide what we were gonna do about five? Not a date, we needed a date, didn't we?
Mary, when, when those appointments, you send us all just what they are and?
Yeah, we need to talk about the sixteenth, right.
Maybe, uh, just so I understand what you're asking, say again? I'm gonna list all the different boards for all the different.
That are coming up that we're going to consider.
Yep.
Right, okay.
I mean, I can send it to you in advance if you'd like, that way.
That's what I meant.
A slate of them, sure.
Yep, thanks.
All right. Okay, yes, let's talk about the sixteenth. We, we have several things on the agenda at this point. We have tentatively the Recreation Commission to come in talking about the treatment of playing fields.
No response though, so I'm not sure about that.
Yep, I said it was tentative. We have a discussion of Inspector Land Use Clerk post. Give inspectors more time, okay, that's good.
Let's see, eight PM, that's gonna take a lot of time.
Yeah, all right, but, you know what? Why don't we?
I, I think if I could just suggest that the IT issue be moved for two reasons, it would give people more time.
Be moved to another meeting?
I didn't send out, I didn't send out the email to everyone in the town hall because I saw this conflict where you said, "Clear the deck before, clear the deck after," and there were already things that you'd set for the sixteenth. And the other reason is, although he didn't tell me why, on June twenty-fourth, Richard Sardell has asked for the use of the hearing room down at the end of the hallway for a Tuesday, ten-thirty in the morning hearing or meeting, I don't know, again, it could be for this purpose.
All right, I don't move, mind moving that to the thirtieth.
And then, I don't know if we have anything on the thirtieth.
The IT.
Oh, okay.
Well, the only tentative things were Historical Commission about the Bullard House and Hurst House projects. I have not heard back from Historical to confirm that they're gonna be available.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind doing both of those on the thirtieth.
You wanna do them both on the thirtieth, okay.
And then, then that's good, because then we're having the inspectors in to talk about, well, we're gonna be discussing the Inspector Land Use Clerk. And that's probably a good time, the inspectors are gonna be here, we can talk about the matters we just discussed, okay? And, yeah.
This gets moved to the thirtieth, and then this one, the inspector should be in and we can talk about.
Oh, also payment issues.
Take the chances.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, then don't, I mean, let's try not to then, we'll, we'll keep the tentative Recreation Commission then. Let's try not to have any other appointments, but if we do have an appointment, let.
Inspector, the River Bridge Mass Works.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, let's not have one before eight fifteen to give us forty-five minutes to talk to the inspectors about the clerk and about these conversations.
Do you want the inspectors at eight? Do you want the inspectors at eight fifteen on the sixteenth?
No, no.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. Seven thirty is when they're scheduled. Leave it at seven thirty. Don't schedule anything else before eight fifteen.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
On Historical Commission, Mary, just make sure they all come in, not just one.
I did ask, yeah.
Okay. And then, so, yeah, seven fifteen and eight on the thirty, so, we could do the IT at eight and the Historical Commission at seven fifteen. That, that seems reasonable, doesn't it?
Hmm, yes, IT at eight?
Yep, yeah, same, same time, but.
Do you think that that would be difficult for town employees to make at eight o'clock? I'm just asking.
Five.
Versus a seven o'clock, just 'cause it'd be later in the evening?
I think it's okay.
Okay.
I mean, you haven't heard?
Nope.
No.
I'm hearing now, so it's all good anyway. I'm hearing anyhow, so it doesn't matter.
Alright, okay. Alrighty, okay, so, then we get to seven, which is, um, scope of the public safety study. Um, I just had a chance this afternoon to read some of these things, and I thought that, you know, they had some good points.
Maybe.
Uh, the chief, the chiefs?
Yes.
Key among those are, you know, cross, cross-training, um.
That's a Tom Gallon, yes.
Yep, yep. Um, I think.
There was a time when there were a number of police were trained, and that was only one, as I understand it, EMT, is that correct?
No, 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 they're all, they're all trained as responders, yes.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think all of them, maybe, there may be one or two exceptions, but I think all of them, yeah. Um. You know, and I thought that, um, that Chief Ricard's comments about, um, the, um, you know, sort of changing issues of Medicare reimbursement and, you know, emphasizing, you know, visiting people, you know, people checking on people, but not necessarily shipping them off to the hospital every time, um, was a good, you know, was a good, a good point, and that maybe some discussion of that kind of trend might be a good thing to add to the scope. How are you gonna?
Well, that's what I said last meeting, that's what I, what I tried to bring up on pointing out the amount of calls, you really don't need an ambulance when you get there, although I guess they have to show up if the call comes in, but when they get there, um, they're really not emergency.
Right, it's the issue of triage and.
That's right.
Yep.
Some looking for a ride to the doctor.
Right.
Which brings you to, maybe you should get a van. I know the council on aging, so that people have a way to get to the doctor.
There are, that's a lot of chat around town on that.
Yep, but that certainly.
We should look into partnering with some of the neighboring towns, I think every neighboring town has it, but, yeah. So, it's a big discussion anyway involving all that.
So, we're looking for a scope. Now, Bruce requested a chance for the Board of Fire Engineers to look at it.
Okay.
Which would push it off to the sixteenth if we did that.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I think there's enough stuff that, that came in in the interim, that it certainly gives me some thoughts to go over some of the stuff that you did and maybe add a couple of points, you didn't get that to you in the next week?
Sure.
Okay.
So, I have a question about this group that you wanted to create, 'cause when I got home and thought about it, I didn't quite understand what this was supposed to be for.
Well, I, my thought was that it could be an advisory committee, and should I say that the?
Advisory to the consultants?
Um, acting, if you will, as a bridge between the consultants and the, and the Board of, of Selectmen, yeah. And providing, you know, citizen input to the consultants, yes.
Well, my understanding was that the consultants do citizen input. I mean, I guess what, um.
I asked her for kind of some guidance on this when she was in the office, through some signatures on some appointment cards. I say, what would you say this is from, you know, what, what, what is the makeup of it, or what's the mission of it, or what do they do?
I, I, I guess because when we decided we were gonna do a consultant, I was under the impression we wanted a neutral third party to look at this.
And I agree, we, we do.
Versus doing a panel locally or doing a retired chief, there was like those three different steps of
Right.
cost and involve, community involvement and whether there needed to be detachment from people who have a local interest, I guess.
I guess I could see having people, once we get the results and we look at it, getting a group together to look at them and review it and say, this would work for our town, this wouldn't work for our town, but it just seemed like another step. I don't know. I didn't quite understand.
Well, again, that's what was in terms of information gathering, um.
Because all of these reviews, all of these, ouch, all of the scope of work here, they, they do a lot of, um, get input from citizens, from.
Would you want citizens to be involved in between chiefs of the departments and the consultants?
Yeah, I, I, I have a little question about that too.
Okay.
Everybody that's interested, that would make a good committee, I, I thought the consultants were gonna interview everybody and anybody that would be on that committee would be interviewed. I think you're right, I think you're right. I think it may be more appropriate when we get the consultants report to. I mean, I, I, I never thought about it before today, frankly.
I mean, here, they interview the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, the Fire Chiefs, the EMS, the Police Chief, Emergency Manager, local officials, employees, representatives of the business communities, and member of the public.
That's it. Yeah, I'm okay with, with the idea that, um, they would review the, um,
After.
the input afterwards, yes.
I mean, that makes, I don't know, more sense to me.
That, that's fine. Once we get it, we, we would hold kind of a public hearing anyway, absolutely. So, go over that stuff. Okay, so it will be a review committee after we have the consultancy?
Sure.
Okay.
Alright, so. Sixteenth June. Everybody's gonna review it while they're flying on their planes to various countries.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want the chiefs in to kind of banter about what should and should not be in the scope? Some things they may, or is that not?
Do you want to put them in for fifteen minutes or half an hour?
On the sixteenth?
Uh, no, no, on the thirtieth.
Well, the thirtieth now, we have.
Oh, yeah, now the thirtieth is getting.
Yeah, that's what I'm just.
You know, I think that, I think that we've gotten input from them and.
We got input, yep, you're right.
If the Board of Fire Engineers wants to write something up and send it to us,
Yeah, right.
that's fine, and, and the only people we haven't heard from is Rescue, right?
Right.
So, that gives Rescue two more weeks if they wanna write something up.
Yep, okay. Alrighty.
Mm-hmm.
Then the next thing is, Benderson, I had a brief conversation with Jed Hayes. I think we will have a result by our next meeting on the sixteenth, and that they will agree that the payment is as we indicated. Okay. And then, um, we have, um, job description, compensation, and posting for the electrical inspector position.
Particularly for all these picture jobs.
Okay. Well, I think we were reasonably comfortable with the, uh,
I want.
description.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think now, we were going to talk about the compensation, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're talking about compensation, but not the average, regular compensation, not when we have big, huge malls.
That's correct, we're talking about the normal compensation.
Okay.
Well, you said you thought seventy-five percent was more realistic than ninety-five, I do agree.
Well, for the, the large ones, we've said that, yes. Um. I was, I was thinking about, do, do, do we know what we've paid these guys over the past three, four, five, six years?
Not in a nice little thing.
Could you do that, Mary?
Now?
No.
No?
Yes, definitely. Yes, you know, too.
'Cause here's what, here's my, you know, my concern really is that we, I, you know, I want to be sure that these people are getting sufficient money
Right, right.
to keep them interested, you know, and involved and responsive to, to what's, to what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I think it's less than most people think, so it'd be good to have it, you know.
Well, and when I looked at this, the other part of all this is how much work, paying a percentage is easy. It's pretty clear what it is, pretty clear what both sides. Hourly, then you're gonna have to decide, you're gonna have to track hours, you're gonna have to decide if you include travel and pre-meetings and everything else.
Yeah.
And then some of these, down at the bottom, these stipends are really quite complex.
Yes. Yeah, and we don't necessarily want to make something complex.
Our building, electrical and plumbing do not get travel reimbursement, right?
Building does.
Building does.
Building does?
Own and travel, because he's on a salary.
Okay.
The other ones don't get anything except their reimbursement.
But the fire, um, fire inspector uses a fire engineer, a fire vehicle, right? So, that's.
That, I'm not.
Yeah, I think so.
Sure. I could ask.
Do you, do you have the annual reports tucked away anywhere?
Which one?
Just this last, last two or three. All, all I was gonna do is look at that line item, just to get a sense for what we.
What's your name, by the way?
Uh, Jacob Arminter.
Clementon?
Arminter.
Oh, Cl, oh.
Holly Arminter's son.
Okay. Where do you live? Which street?
Just, just after Railroad Tracks, um, the street on the left, going out.
Right. You think we know what we're doing? Huh? Why don't you come up and join us? You don't have any, got any questions or anything?
Uh, no, I'd have to pick something that was brought up, the topic, and discuss it with Mr. Durant, who's my counsel for it.
Oh, oh, yeah, Mr. Durant?
Yeah.
Yeah, you've been discussing a long time.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, so these just had budgeted, requested.
You understand what open meetings means?
You'd have to go look in the.
It would be in the reports, I think.
For the most part, yeah.
Well, I think it would be in the town account.
Yeah, we wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't have it here, yeah.
Alright, Plumbing and Gas made ten thousand five ten, so they got paid nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four.
In what year?
This was in FY thirteen.
Okay.
Electrical inspector was fourteen thousand six ten, fire inspector was fourteen thousand six seventy-seven.
Okay, and then, um, in, uh.
That's twenty-eleven.
In twenty-eleven, just to give you an idea, there, um, plumbing and gas permits total were seventy-nine twenty-five.
Those are some slow recession years.
Yeah, so that was, so that, they would've been paid about seven then. And the inspector of wires brought in fourteen thousand, that would've been paid about twelve. Okay? Maybe we can just pull these out, but that, I mean, that does give a, it does give a sense that, you know, people are doing all those inspections for somewhere, you know, between like, say, nine and fifteen thousand dollars a year. So, when you look at ninety-five percent and get all kind, all crazy about it, um, you also have to look at the amount that you're paying somebody to be here, be available, and do those things.
But also, it's not a full-time job, it's kind of a part-time thing, and, um, how much work is required to do this, you know, maybe it isn't, look, ten thousand dollars a year is like some chunk of money to pick up.
It is, but as I say, I mean, I think, you know, it's, it's, so to my mind, it's a little more than just, you know, the hours that they're at, they have to be available, they have to actually, you know, be interested and responsive and so on, and, you know, I mean, and I'm, and my guess would be, and this is the thing, my guess would be that if you're looking at a town of seventy-five hundred people and you're getting eighty percent of receipts, you're, you're talking about, you know, one, probably substantially more work, and two, substantially more, uh, more inspections, and, and two, substantially more income, even though obviously the percentage is lower, you know?
Well, two thousand twelve was sixty-eight hundred, seventy-eight hundred and sixty-six.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So, and that was, you know.
But these are really gonna be boom years coming up.
Right, and, and again, we want to, I'm not sure they're gonna be boom years in residential though, necessarily, but, um, I think we have talked about the idea of reducing the percentage to seventy-five.
I totally agree.
On, you know, on the larger projects.
Yep.
And we will talk to them about that. But. Well, that's how, I mean, it's helpful to understand what we're talking about, it's probably, you know, a range from seven to fifteen, depending on, on the year, without, you know, without a major project involved.
Well, thanks for putting this, taking the time to do this, this is, uh, some of it.
So, I don't know, I mean, do.
But it's all over the day, right?
It's all over the place.
It is, yeah, exactly, it's, um.
The only thing I can say is some of the bigger towns pay either a stipend, so, uh, Rentham pays thirty dollars an inspection in eighteen hundred for an annual stipend. But Swambskets pays, they call it a stipend, but I call it a salary, twenty-two thousand dollars. So, the bigger towns tend to do monthly stipends or pay by the hour. But they also have a bigger infrastructure.
Mm-hmm. And these, these are figures for electrical or plumbing or what?
These were electrical, right?
These were electrical.
These were the ones that Mary got, and I just reformatted it.
These are strictly electrical, okay.
I mean, the interesting thing about our town is that we're very small, but we have a lot of construction going on.
Right now, a lot of commercial construction.
Yeah.
But of course, in some years, we don't have much at all. Um, but the, the, the electric and plumbing rates comparable to building rates, I mean, as the,
you, you saw what Larry put in for a report, even, so he is getting a salary, but there's going to be that, you compare what he's put out just in this last report versus last year, you know, the big jump in development that we're having, the same thing's going to happen with plumbing and electric. Look at what last year, you'll have a.
Right, which is why we're talking about reducing the percentage on those big ones. Uh, but I think what, what we're, and, and, and we are, I think we do need to address the peak of the waves, but right now, what we're trying to say is, do we need to adjust the baseline?
Right.
Um. I, I don't feel like hugely compelled, because I look at the amount of money that's, that's going out, it doesn't, it seems like a reasonable amount of money to be going out, as I say, to keep somebody, you know, attentive, you know, responsive, and focused on this as one of the things that they do. I mean, my, my sense is, if you get a decent electrician, you know, you pay him a stipend of twenty-five hundred dollars a year, and, uh, you know, you're, you're gonna use him for two hundred and fifty, three hundred hours, how interested are they gonna be? I, I mean, that would be much.
Well, I think you at least have to go down to ninety percent, because you're paying FICA and Social Security on this money, which is seven point six five, so right now, at ninety-five percent, you're not getting enough.
Are we paying it?
Are they ten ninety-nine, is that, is that what you're saying?
I don't know.
I don't know.
But I think that's a good ar, that's.
I, I don't think so, I think they actually get a check.
I, I, I thought that they were independent contractors, so. But that's a good thing to check, and it just goes to show that we're not probably ready to answer this. I would say, yes, if we are paying FICA on it, then that's a, that's a good argument to drop it down to ninety. I like to say ninety-five percent myself, for all.
Well, that would make it easier, getting, it would be made up for the fact that it got this huge amount coming in the next two or three years. Well, no, I think you're right, you keep the, look at the base and then address the peaks.
I mean, I'm open-minded about it, I just, yeah.
Well, you could figure out better, you know, what's the best way of doing that, dealing with it.
Let's ask, let's ask.
The accountant.
The accountant whether we do, I don't, I wouldn't think we do on an offset receipts, because, but I could be wrong. And again, we're not gonna figure that out sitting here, so let's ask the question.
Okay.
All right. So, and anyway, we're having them in.
Sixteen.
On the sixteen. I think certainly you're right, if we are paying FICA, that's a good argument for bringing it down to ninety, you know? All right.
Well, that's the highest one here, ninety, the average is eighty, you know?
It is, and again, I mean, my, and we've, we've, we've sort of touched upon this a few times over the past ten or twelve years, and one of the ideas was that, you know, with a small town, there were some years in which you really didn't get much going on at all, that that was justified because it kept a sort of a, you know, a subsistence, you know, stipend in for somebody that that kept them interested and, and kept them on the job. And, you know, and I mean, if, you, you look at, you're paying somebody, let's say, a range of seven to fourteen at ninety percent, okay? At ninety-five percent, if you drop that to ninety, I mean, you'd be talking about, you know, chipping away, you know, three hundred bucks on, you know, four hundred bucks.
Yeah, there's all kinds of ways of looking at it.
The lower end, you know, I mean, it's, you're not talking about big, big bucks, anyway, on an annual basis, but.
Well, the talent, what will tell is when we advertise for the job, go out to bid and see what we get the responses on.
Exactly. No, and I think we need to sort this out when we go out to bid for the electrical, because I think that's a good time to make a change.
Right.
Yep. Okay. All right. So that's ten, that's not, ten.
I think it can be a ten ninety-nine.
Okay, and somebody has sent in, who did this come from?
That's, Tim Wheeler put his finger on that just to explain that he thinks that this New England football club would be a private nonprofit club, and so would fall under a residential agricultural use, the keyword being "club."
Interesting.
You mean they could.
Be not, that the use is allowed there on the recent land.
That use will be allowed on agricultural?
I don't know, because you see.
That's what Tim said.
Diane said absolutely not.
I think you've got two things, you've got active recreation not involving motorized equipment, which seems to describe this.
Yeah.
And that is no in residential agriculture, and you've got private club nonprofit.
Which is what they are.
Which is what they are, but the activity is active recreation.
Incredible, right.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a close call as to what applies.
I would think that. So if they're, if they fall under the club nonprofit, then they just need a site.
I will tell you this, I will tell you, yeah, certainly.
And a special permit, yeah.
Yeah, that would require a special permit. Uh, yeah. No, sorry, that would require a site plan review.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Not special permit.
Who does the site plan review, is that the ZBA or plan board?
That's ZBA.
Tom, do you know what that, what the agreement was going back on that property that is up on the opposite side of the road, up by the old pond, behind those three new houses, you go by Spooky World, and there's three houses in the old gravel pit, and then there's a chunk of land, twenty acres or something up back there, that they had scheduled for a memory.
Memory care.
What?
Memory care.
River Run memory care.
River Run memory care. But there was some, something to do with that, that the town had a right.
The town has a first right of refusal on that.
No, we, we have half of it, the memory care unit?
They have a first right of refusal on that. The reason I'm asking, I thought there was Tim talking one time about relating that and picking up the land across the street.
Sorry, yes, sorry, we, we have the ability to buy it for a dollar.
A dollar.
You're right.
A dollar.
That's what I actually meant.
And they were saying that, I don't know, last time they came in, it was like one point two million or something, that they were gonna sell it, so we have the ability to buy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Half of it for a buck.
But this, okay, so it's both, that's a permit and site plan review.
Why aren't we buying it?
Because we came to an agreement with them that we weren't gonna, because it's in the mitigation that if we buy it, then we're responsible for some of the improvements on the road.
Oh, the roads and stuff, oh, yeah.
So we kind of.
Because they need frontage to use that, and they don't have it, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a very, I don't know, it's a very close call.
Or just, because I thought there was some.
No, I don't think it was the frontage, it was that they were looking for somebody and we weren't gonna buy it until they were ready to develop it, because we didn't wanna pay for the road.
Right, okay, okay.
I didn't know what that deal was.
So they wanted to have a special community meeting for Thursday, June twelfth, at seven, but then they emailed saying that we can't do it until eight fifteen, can we have a meeting at eight fifteen? And I was wondering if you think that makes sense to have a community meeting at eight fifteen?
I don't know why we're having a meeting anyway.
Well, they wanted to make a presentation to the town to get a feel from the town as to whether or not there's an appetite for this at all, if not, they wanted to go to another community.
Well, what do they want the town, I don't, I don't quite.
Yeah, it would be a town vote, it wouldn't be.
There's no town vote on it.
No.
So it's.
It'd be just a forum, they get to hear whoever happened to come.
Put information out there.
As, as I said last week, I'm not gonna be around for that anyway.
If they wanna have a forum, then let them find out, well, they know they can build there, maybe. I can't see going to the bother of having a forum unless you know they're definitively buying it and doing something about it.
Right, yeah.
Want them to host their own forum?
Well.
That would be, like, offer them the use of a room they can handle it and publicize it themselves, or?
Well, I mean, I don't think that we, I got from the last meeting, that any of us wanna put any money into this as a town, right?
No.
So.
No, I don't.
And if they have a ZBA hearing for site plan review, then they'd get a forum.
There you go. You know, that's, I agree with that.
I mean, I got plenty of other things to do.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and I mean, I think.
No, no, no forum, just all of none.
Yeah.
Yeah. If they go forward with it, then they'll have site plan review and they'll have posted the meeting, right, the hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, and it is, I think, you know, the zone by law is kind of ambiguous, because it has active recreation described, which it certainly is, and then it has private club nonprofit, which it also is.
I don't know, what takes precedence?
I mean, my own sense is that what takes precedence is the thing that has the most impact in terms of land use and.
Right.
An impact, and that should be what, you know, that should be what, what governs, you know? But I'm not, we're not construing that one, it's, that's another board.
Yep.
All right?
Okay.
Okay.
So Mary's gonna just, we're not gonna have, we don't, we don't wanna participate in it.
Okay. All right, we've talked about the IT meeting and scheduling that, that was eleven, right? Nothing else to talk about there?
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Okay.
That's the thirtieth now.
Now the thirtieth. Okay, discussion regarding.
Uh, Keith did that, he just took it out of.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just going through and saying, I'm just gonna say, we, we did that with Keith.
Yeah.
We did the surplus issue with Keith. Okay, we have a warrant to approve for the tuning of a piano at the Old Town Hall or the Town Hall revolving account motion to approve.
It's a move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They don't have any discretion then on, I mean, they have to get our approval.
Yes.
For a bill, any bill like that, huh?
Yeah, because it's paid out of the revolving account, they're, they're an advisory committee, they started out, they do it, but we.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Fourteen is discussion of municipal insurance change and approval of insurance contract.
Okay, so Maya's, yep, Maya's contractor is there for the coming year, if you wanted to just go with Maya. There's an agent from something called Berry Insurance who's been calling monthly and saying, consider the three or four different vendors we can sell, Zurich, Mega, and something else, if you wanted to consider changing. Peggy always warned, don't ever change from Maya. And with that Maya proposal, there's a whole list of credits that we've earned for hosting, all the different cred. I, I don't, I don't know the particulars of all the others, this agent wanted to get face time with you to pitch.
Which agent?
Uh, Berry Insurance.
Oh.
Wanted to have an opportunity to address the board about what he can offer, and he has three different towns, or Berry Insurance has three different towns they do service. I don't know if you wanna investigate that, or if you wanna say next year you'd investigate it, or, it's kinda short, this.
When does this contract start?
I think it says June thirtieth there.
Yeah.
That, that, that.
It's a current, it's a fiscal year.
Just a renewal, oh, fiscal year?
Fiscal contract. This doesn't include a rate increase of thirteen point nine percent.
It does include, yes.
It does?
It does.
And why it, why they're increasing it?
The next page over, you can, the different claims, comp and litigation.
Yeah.
And, actually, comp is, yeah, comp and litigation, there's a breakdown of each.
Yeah, I guess I feel like we are right now in the middle of litigation, it's really not, I don't think it's the time to change horses. That's my own.
No, I agree.
That's my own sense.
If we changed and we're doing litigation, Maya would still be the litigator, right?
They would, they would still have litigation coverage, yes, but. I'm sorry, I don't see, I don't see the description of how, what you were saying, charges and.
Yeah, it's kinda cryptic, could I, just have that.
Yeah, please.
There is a memo that I put together when Chuck Lloyd came and visited, and he showed fourteen versus fifteen grades.
Are people interested in seeing why it went up thirteen percent more than what we know generally at this point, the number of claims and the litigation? No, okay, Mary.
Never mind, Mary.
I'll look at it afterwards, don't worry about it. So I would take a motion to approve reapplication to Maya for our insurance coverage. So move.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ooh, right, it's a aye, oof, that's over too long.
All right.
Seems like a, quite a beast to try to take on with weeks to go.
Yeah, it does.
It's almost like IAC, you know, to review what you'd wanna do.
Yeah.
So we didn't budget enough for workers' comp. It's something for our next year, we budgeted thirty-five and it's going up to forty-three.
Right.
So it's something we might wanna tell, uh, what do you call it?
Fincom.
Fincom about.
Mm-hmm.
And show.
Okay. All right, we have here an approval of the DHCD subsidized housing inventory.
It just had, something you have to sign, but it's, I have to get some of the moving piece of that little, when Berlin Woods filed its ZBA application, so there's a couple of blanks in there I could fill in tomorrow, but just confirming that there's three more added, affordables added at Berlin Woods, that, they only had two before on their private, previous SHI listing, and now they need to be notified of the three more added.
Does this tell us?
And the, and the building permits are actually copied there with the occupancy permits, so I'm gonna give them all.
So this is filled out and it reflects, this thirty-two and eight reflects that?
Uh, thirty-two and eight is the total project, but five are done. So we're adding, they only know of two, they need to be added, three more need to be added to that, for the state to be up to date, current as of this.
And so, when do we add those?
When they're done, so like, there's, there's no occupancy permits on those, he's got, he's just pulling, um, the five, eight.
Right, what if, if I, when I sign this, what am I certifying?
That, that the prior SHI listing that the state gave to Eloise says that there's two affordables occupied at Berlin Woods, and there's actually five now, so we need to update it for the state.
But I don't see that on this.
I have to fill in the narrative, but, but the building permits are all here for it. So there's five now.
So what will this look like when, I, I need it filled out before I can sign.
Okay, okay, I can do that.
Yeah. I mean, I.
Right.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can put it up, I'll activate it.
Yep. And then we can talk about what are in the blanks and why they're in the blanks.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Just, is that, so that's the state's inventory of what they consider to be affordable units in Berlin, houses, apartments, condos, whatever.
Yeah.
Right. Every project.
Can we argue that and, I mean, I, I have a couple of places I rent that I, below what people are renting on.
It.
On media, how do, can you, can you do things like that, get that counted?
I don't know.
Uh, no, there have to be deed restrictions and so on.
Oh, oh, I don't want that.
Okay. All right.
Just to.
A reserve fund transfer, was that approved?
It was.
Okay, great.
The next one of the seventy-two?
Oh, that's because you, there it is, reserve fund transfer.
Oh, okay.
Oh, thanks.
All right.
The Worcester Regional Medical Corps.
Mm-hmm.
Folk. I talked to Harvard's former multi-year dispatcher, who's now an assistant to the police and the fire chief, and she was extremely enthusiastic about letting you know, she gave this woman Lois some face time, she says. She used to be part of the Millsix County District Four A Medical Reserve Corps, which in the two thousand and eight ice storm, although she was a Harvard dispatcher, there was no crisis-mannered way where that trailer was stored, and just through that whole network, she got that trailer filled with cots over to the Bromfield School for that to become a shelter for showering, eating, shower, showering, getting water for septics and everything like that, but she was able to get supplies out there.
Out to.
Harvard, in the two thousand and eight ice storm. So this, the Worcester region, though, is different, the Worcester Regional Reserve Corps has kind of fallen off in recent years. And this woman Lois is trying to get time in front of boards of selectmen and boards of health in all, or all of Worcester County, just to get the word out there that volunteers can step up and serve in this capacity.
Can she do it in August or September?
Yeah, right.
I'm sure she could.
Because.
Beginning of hurricane season.
Yeah.
No, let's do it in September then.
You wanna do it September?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just gonna give her a, a. I'm just going to give her a, a September date then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe the second meeting in September.
Sep-, okay.
And then a discussion of the purchase of calendar dates, which would be the, for the-
That little community calendar.
Yeah.
I guess that's fifty cents per listing.
Yeah.
And the selectman meetings are listed on that.
Yeah.
And I found old things that you've paid for to put them on it.
Yeah.
But here's the thing, you know, a new, it's, you're putting it on from November of this, this, October, sorry, this October through the following September of two thousand and fifteen, with whatever election result you have next spring, in theory, you could change your meeting date. You don't have to stick to Mondays.
We, we-
Don't say that.
But, but, but to say in advance that it's going to be this schedule.
It's not the official.
I, that's what I'm asking. Do you want to do that if it's not the official, or do you want to do it to support the calendar?
Yeah, we do it to support the calendars. Twenty bucks or whatever.
Do you want me to ask about a little block ad instead of putting dates on the calendar?
No.
No.
Nope.
So just put-
Just put them-
Project our original, do the same.
Been done, right along.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do.
Yep.
Who puts that out, by the way?
Women's, it's in that letter.
Day Guild?
Oh, okay.
Is it Day Guild?
Yeah. Okay.
Wendy Roglinsky asked me about it, that's her name.
I think it's the Day Guild.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Big decision.
All right. Okay, that gets us into miscellaneous correspondence. I noticed that we got the search of insurance.
Yes, done.
For, that's, that's B.
So what happened with that? They did get it?
Both VFIS and Maya gave the certificates needed.
Oh, good.
And.
The Cabello's building permits in that.
Yep.
There's an anonymous property complaint letter.
Okay, there you go.
If it's anonymous, I don't think we read it before.
I didn't put the address in the, in the agenda because it's anonymous, but.
I have a name.
It does not.
Oh, it's, and we're not interested.
Reader's application, ZBA application.
I would like to see the Agricultural Commission Chair email to the Tennessee Gas. Does that say anything?
Sure, right here.
Do you want me to contact Mary Ann and see what, do you want to prod that committee forward for the Tennessee Gas thing, or do you want me to?
Well, whatever happened, I don't see anything in here. What happened with having a meeting with the Bolton Selectmen?
That is, ooh, not in here? No, you know what? I put it as an appointment because I thought Mary Ann was going to be here. So Bolton responded that, Don Lowe responded that he'd be interested in a regional approach, so didn't Martin from Boylston. They, Don Lowe suggested a town administrator, or in the case of this town, a selectman, one from each community getting together and having kind of an offline meeting so that they can talk about strategy. And Don-
But then, then he asked if we wanted to come to the-
That's, and involved that, they're having a meeting with Tennessee Gas, I think it's June twenty-sixth, and they're having, they're using school space for it because they expect a large crowd. He didn't think it would be taking questions and answers from, but it's an open meeting, so anyone could go. But he didn't think it would be geared towards Berlin and people.
No, it won't be.
He thought maybe if you wanted to attend, though, you'd be, that's an open invitation, I'm sure, to attend that.
That's a Thursday night.
Yeah, and they've been asked to access land in Bolton. I think I have that right, but not in Boylston. Yeah, but not in Boylston. They have not had.
They haven't worked their way down there yet?
They haven't asked to cross any town lands in Boylston.
Yeah, so they're crossing Boylston, but not crossing any town lands in Boylston.
Correct.
Yes.
They've been getting homeowners asking about the project because they are getting the land agents making their way to homeowners.
Yep, okay.
So, just incidentally, when I was driving through Pepperell the other day, there were the stop mass fracking signs on the side of one-nineteen, different people's homes. And then I walked in on the community center, because I was trying to get to a soccer game, and there was a community meeting down the basement of the recreation hall, just citizens, and they looked, there was formal, talking about strategy.
There was an interesting letter in the Telegram a few days ago. I don't know if you saw it or not. Some guy sounded like he knew what he was talking about, but claiming that the thirty-six inch pipe going through up Pepperell Way and that is, most of it's going to be shipped overseas out of a port up in the North Shore. I don't know if that's true or not, but he, he made it look like the major reason for that was to get this fracked gas, which is an issue in itself, to sell overseas, to ship overseas, and more of that than providing to Northeast with gas. So that, that type of thing, be interested to look into. And some people will, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
So do we want to arrange a meeting with the Bolton Selectmen?
Do you have, does one of you want to go? Two of you would spark a forming.
Yeah.
He specifically said he thought that it should be not open. Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
I don't mind going, unless Walter wants to go.
When will it be? You know what, it's only because I've been working with Mary Ann, I'd take the project on if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay?
I think you need to get in touch with him.
I'm going to put you in touch with him and then, and then-
You know Don.
I never really heard about whether Boylston was interested. They just all, both said yes to a regional approach. They thought that was smart, and nothing from Northborough.
Okay.
No response.
Okay. All right.
Is there other action in open session? One of the earthworks, by the way. If somebody was going to, let's say that pile of organic material, an Indian hit. Somebody went and bought five trailer trucks and uploads of that.
It's not earth.
It's not earth, compost, so that's perfectly, okay, that's what I thought. Someone asked me about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And there probably isn't enough there, even if it were to trigger, I mean, because it's a fairly high threshold.
Yeah, yeah.
All the clover growing on top, if it could do it.
Yeah.
So there's just a couple of executive session things.
Or some executive session.
Just a couple, yeah. Okay.
All right, so there's nothing else for open session?
Nope.
Okay, the board will not take the roll call vote to enter into executive session. We will not be returning to public session. Roll call for going into executive session. Andrew, aye?
Boo, aye.
Vic, aye.
I was pumping gas up at BJ's the other day. This guy come by, he wanted to-